I verify there is a quorum. All five of us are here. I'm not sure if we have any guest, no guests, no public comment. Board, have you had a chance to review the minutes? And having done so, do you have any proposed changes? If none, we will accept the minutes as they are. That takes us immediately to our first item, celebrating success, Foreign Language Literature Trip Spring 2018, Erin Cloyde and Molly Michon. Welcome.
Hi. Thanks so much for having us. We saw you last when we were begging for fees to be added to account for this class. And so we wanted to come back and tell you how it went. It may be a great far away.
Closer, maybe a little closer to it.
Are we too far away?
Well, I don't know. What do you think?
Hot mic, hot mic. Okay, we're just gonna go ahead with our sound effects. We wanted to introduce you to our crew. The photo on the left is of our class. We did some team building just prior to leaving. The photo on the right, we are standing on an ancient Roman wall around the city of Chester.
Should we wait?
Take a pause.
Right.
It's just too hard to get it through.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
He's a genius. Okay.
So in addition to planning all the trip details and all of those, all that information that went into it, our first job was to plan the curriculum. As you remember, it runs as a regular class. It begins in January and runs through the end of May. And it's under that category of cultural awareness or that, almost like a diversity category. And so we approached this through the lens of murder mysteries. And these are the texts that we ended up choosing. And so we approached it as, how can we make students aware of as broad a range of cultures as possible through this lens of murder mysteries? So the text on your left is our Scottish text. We were able to meet with the authorized tour guide in Edinburgh as he took us around and said, this is where this police chief goes to work. This is where the crooks hide out when they go on the run in this novel. This is where this detective lives. The text in the middle is our Welsh novel. We were able to tour, there's a small island north of Wales called Anglacy. And we were able to walk along the straits where the scenes in this novel takes place. The final novel on the right takes place mostly in the underground in London. And part of what we were working for here is we were working for novels that not only introduced students to culture, but they introduced students to the geographical location where we were going to tour. And so in each of the novels, we are able to stand in those locations and say, remember when this happened? This is where it happened. Remember when this happened? This is when it happened. And so the curriculum all folded into the trip and then all folded into this broader experience that we were able to offer students.
So our travel destinations were Edinburgh, Scotland, Chester, England, which was our launching point then to visit Anglacy, Wales. And then we wrapped up in London. We walked a lot. We were joking when we got back that this could be a wellness class. And this was off of our iPhone. And I didn't have my phone with me all the time. So the really best part of this experience was that we paired students up and they led tours for three hours at each location we visited. So one of our students had us walking 10 miles our first day.
Edinburgh, yeah.
That was in Scotland. I was surprised about London that we racked up 29 miles. It was over 91 miles altogether. Because we use public transport so often, but we got in shape.
So here are a few pictures. The picture on the bottom left is when we landed. We took off from Seattle, we landed at seven o'clock in the morning. And the rules on the train to Scotland where you cannot fall asleep, because you have to sleep that night when you arrive in Scotland. Some of us accomplished that feat, some of us did not. But the picture on the bottom right, just one of the pictures of when we were on the tubes. And somehow, all 20 of us managed this trip for more than two weeks and none of us got lost. We all jumped on the right tube at the right time. We all jumped on the right train at the right time. We only had 30 seconds to spare. The picture on the upper right-hand corner, we had 30 seconds to spare when we landed in London. We all made that train and made it to Scotland on time. But part of this was that cultural piece of exposing students to a different culture. And part of that was just the stand on the right when you're on the escalator, don't get run over. And just the cultural expectations that are there.
One overwhelming gush of our students was how great the food was. In fact, many of them said that was what they missed when they came home. Contrary to legend and rumor, London and England, they have really good food. So we were not hungry at all. In fact, some of the best food we've ever had. The only time we did get complaints about food were when people, for some reason, ordered nachos and pizza in Scotland. To which we said, why would you order pizza and nachos? These just feature a few of our group tours. On the top right, we are in a tube station, actually Tottenham Court Road, where the buskers of our novel used to play and make money. Beautiful mosaics. This photo in the center is in Scotland with the Ian Rankin Authorized Tour Guide. And in the bottom left, my cousins are in Parliament. We were able to get a reception and tours of the Houses of Parliament.
Oh, that's great.
Again, more of our group tours. And these feature the students guiding us and leading us and educating us on where we were and what we were seeing.
So part of this, as we were going through the tour and as we were traveling home, part of what we started to recognize is that this class is so robust that it's more, it should be about a 6'9" credit class, because it addresses nutrition, it addresses wellness, it addresses interpersonal communication, it addresses culture and critical thinking and literature. And part of the skills that we were able to learn along the way were those interpersonal communication pieces. And so there were 20 of us on this trip, and we never left each other's side. So there was no alone time, there was no downtime. And we, at times, there were many of us in this, how many?
Fourteen.
Yeah, we put 14 girls in the same dorm room when we were in Chester. We won't do that again. So we learned how to cooperate, we learned how to get along. And what we felt like is by the time that we got back, that we sort of formed this bond almost like a family. That it went so beyond the classroom experience that we were able to do so much work beyond what we could do in 16 or 17 weeks in the spring semester.
And provide this experience for these students who never dreamt of undertaking such an amazing holiday. Those two fellows in the back in that center picture had never been on an airplane before. Spokane was the biggest city they'd ever seen. And how fabulous for them to say that their first plane ride was to London, right?
That's great.
And that Edinburgh is their favorite city.
Pictures, yeah.
Yeah, they just, this is downtime and just, they loved hanging out together and spending time. Doctor Who levers up in the top left, found their TARDIS.
So part of what we're looking forward to is the next trip. And so what we've decided to do is to repeat the same exact trip in the spring and roll out the same details and the same travel agenda while everything is fresh and while we've learned some lessons. And so the fees will be slightly increased to account for exchange rates. And we need to adjust a couple hotel rooms as we go along the way. The other piece that we're working on is adding professional tours along the way. And so there's a podcast that comes out of London called Murder Mile. And we just contacted the author of that podcast, and he's agreed to meet with our group and give us a private tour while we're in London. And so listening to the podcast will be part of the curriculum for next year. The other piece that's not here is that we're hoping to write a grant to be able to provide scholarship money for our students next year. And so whether this is helping them provide, maybe cover the cost of a passport or cover the cost of the deposit that will be due in December, or help cover some fees, we're trying to add on to everything that went right last year, but also help as many students that can go on this trip as possible. And so stay tuned for that piece, and we'll see how the funding comes together.
And it will definitely be Irish murder mysteries in 2020. So stay tuned and we'll keep you posted.
That's great. Board, any questions about the spring trip?
We also have a couple students.
Oh, please do.
Thanks.
Love to hear from you.
Do you have any questions, or should we just?
Just go ahead, tell us your experience.
Um, I will start then. Really, an experience of a lifetime. One of the things that Molly said specifically in the beginning of the class was that she hopes that this is not the first time, or the only time, that we get to travel like this, but that it opens the world for us. And it really has done that for me. I already have bought tickets to Portugal for Thanksgiving break. And it just, the experience was amazing and, I mean, sorry to sound corny, but really magical. And the relationships that I developed with my fellow classmates is unlike anything I've ever experienced while going to college. You know, I learned about these historical places in school growing up, but I had never really had the reality of being like in Westminster Abbey and seeing these entombed historical figures. It was, I mean, it was emotional. I cried. Like, it was just an incredible experience and just how ancient everything is. And I cannot say enough good things about the trip. I mean, this has been a true gift for us. So, yeah, thank you.
I would just echo what she said regarding all the traveling. That was nice. But I also want to say that Molly and Erin both did phenomenal jobs of getting everything arranged, scheduled, travel was no issue. I was in the Army for 12 years and we, a lot of young people moving to other countries a lot, and I've seen how much of a nightmare it can be. And that was my expectation going in, was it was just gonna be a total, just a nightmare. And absolutely not. Neither of them could put any of your sergeant majors or colonels in the Army. Shame on them. They're moving around troops.
They work great together. They complement each other great, yeah.
Very nice. Well, Board, questions? Trustee Dunlap.
I appreciate you taking these students on an experience like this. I mean, that's wonderful. But in an effort to look for a great mystery, which book is the best one of the three to read?
They're different. They're so di, would you like a police procedural? Would you like?
Say yes to that, just.
Okay, yes. Yes.
About Roman history? Do you like ancient history?
Not the whale.
No, you don't want history.
Okay.
Start with the Ian Rankin, even dogs in the wild.
Okay.
So start with that.
Thank you.
More of the police procedural, and then we'll make other board members happy with that.
All right.
Trustee Howard?
I was just sort of, after I listened to that, I was really tempted to sign up for next year.
Yeah.
Until you put that 95 miles up there.
It was actually great.
Yeah.
It felt great. It was amazing. They took great care of us and...
I think I might wait for the bus trip.
Did you have anything? Well, I'm just curious, did you feel safe the whole time? How was your security? Good?
I never felt in harm's way. I usually go every summer and I've never felt threatened. In fact, I feel like London's one of the safest places in the world.
Good, great.
You're always on CCTV.
Yeah.
You know?
And they prepared us to, you know, be aware, we are gonna be in a foreign country, you know. So we did have many talks during class before the trip to prepare us for the potential of, you know, danger or whatever. But, yeah, I never felt unsafe for a second.
Good. Well, I'm so glad that you're presented. We love hearing from you. And it sounds like a very successful trip. So we'll look forward to hearing next year's, too.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Christie?
Yes.
Brad?
Brad, did I miss you?
And Lita.
Oh, Lita, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Chair Wood, I would just like to prompt another question, because I think you would find it of interest. I would like to ask either the faculty or the students to describe in a little bit more detail what the requirement was for the student in their part of presenting the tour, because I think it's, really brings closure to what this whole class was about. So if I could just, if they would just share with you a brief description of that, I think you would enjoy it.
Sure.
So we were given the writing assignments, obviously, at the beginning of the class with the syllabus. After about two or three weeks into the course, we were each assigned to our groups of two to plan the trip. And gee, what was it, about halfway through, we had to, not even halfway, probably about third way through the class, we had to submit our, like, tentative plan, what we'd like to do, going around town, showing the different landmarks, and make sure they didn't step on top of each other. After we were given the go-ahead on that, then we really got to dig into the details, find places in the books, put them on the map, plan the walk, how you're gonna get there. I probably rehearsed it mentally in my head like five times. So when I got there, 500 times more, like, when I got to Edinburgh, I was like, oh, I already know where I'm at. City I've never walked in before. It's pretty handy. So you got to learn a lot of the city you were doing and the history of it just before you even got there, which made it, I think, a much more richer experience, because you got to, you know, actually know what you were looking at. It was pretty in-depth. I'll be doing it.
That was another, the thing that I forgot to mention was, one of the awesome things about the class was that we were our own tour guides. And so before we actually went on the trip, like Chris was saying, we had to, we were assigned like a location, like a city, and then we had to pick a few potential sites to give our tour on. And we had a partner in our class to do this with. And then after we were approved for our location to give a tour on, once we were there in the city, we led all 20 people through these streets that we'd never been on before, but just based on research and thank God for Google Maps. And it worked out, and Chris was the first day, and we walked like 10 miles and saw all kinds of like historical, great, awesome stuff. And, yeah, so that requirement was hugely beneficial, because we really got to know the places that we were staying before we even got to explore them much. Because we sort of explored Google Maps before we got there. And so we were our own tour guides every single day, pretty much. I think we had like one or two afternoons or something that were free, but...
That's great. You'll always take that knowledge with you.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Well, thank you. Okay, that's gonna take us on to our constituent reports. And for ASNIC, instead of Peter tonight, we have Scott filling in. Scott, thank you, filling in for him, and short notice, so thank you.
Yeah, I first wanted to start by thanking you, Madam Chair, and the Board, and Dr. McLennan, and the guests for allowing me to speak tonight. I wanted to start out by introducing myself. For those of you who don't know who I am, I am Scott Kennedy. I am the ASNIC Vice President here at NIC. And I am taking place for Peter, who unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight. So I wanted to start out by talking about the events that we've been covering so far in this academic year with student government. And the first event that I wanted to cover was the ASNIC Retreat that happened recently. It was a great event in which we were able to learn a lot about leadership and personal development. And it was a great event in which I will remember for many years to come. I bonded with the ASNIC Senators and our group, and I feel like we're gonna have a great team moving on into this year. And then in effort to connect with more students, ASNIC has been hosting the Cardinal Learning Center classes. And we've been talking to students about how they can get involved on campus and as well, how they can obtain information to know what's going on in campus. And yesterday, ASNIC had its first board meeting for the academic year, and we confirmed our Senate Pro Tempore. And that was exciting, and we kind of outlined what we've done so far and our personal achievements since the beginning of the year. And with respect to that, since at the beginning of the year, we developed our purpose statement, which is as follows. ASNIC is dedicated to improving student success through student involvement and communication. So far this year, we have been working towards that by hosting the Week of Welcome Cruise, in which we had over 200-plus students attend, and we thought that it was a great success. As well, I have been working with seven clubs who are trying to start their organizations as well. Kyle Johann, who is the coordinator of, our new coordinator of campus life, he's been helping with that, and he's been an amazing resource for me to reach out to. And then as well, we have been working on the top 10 events, which are, we've, Peter has been majorly focused on that. And if you look at the little pamphlet that we put at your desks, it outlines all the events that are gonna be happening in this semester, and we felt that they were, what's great about them is that it is events that represent each department at NIC. It has athletic events, it has events from the music department, theater, et cetera. So we felt that it was a great way for students to kind of get an experience of all of campus at NIC. And so one of the events that has been the highlight and what we're focusing on right now is the Day of Service. And at this event, it's going to be where students and staff volunteer with local nonprofits. And currently, registration is low, but we've been attempting to increase the numbers through ASNIC awareness, in which we've been tabling. Today, actually, we just were promoting the event at the Wellness Center, I mean, excuse me, at the Wellness Fair. And so I would recommend, or I would ask if you all could please promote the event so that we could increase numbers that will attend the event, that would be much appreciated. But other than that, that's really all that I have to report. Is there any questions that you all have for me?
Board, questions of Scott? Well, it was a very professional report, and you look very professional.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
At the board meetings, that's very nice.
Found out pretty quickly that I was gonna be presenting tonight, so it was exciting. But it was fun.
You look great.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Staff Assembly, Kathy Sparks.
Great. That's the look.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, and President McLennan. We had a staff assembly meeting September 13th, and we had a couple guest speakers. The first one was Dinah Rents, and she reported on the progress for the Integrated Strategic Planning Committee and provided us with a handout with the framework for the three implementation committees. And she also provided information about the new software that we're using. It's called Crowa, and it will provide data for campus. We heard from Deb Ferguson about the BeWell. BeWell NIC, and it's a new wellness program for the students that's provided free for them. And this is the first year or so that they're using it. And they have a website, so if you're interested in that, I'm happy to send it to you. The President also came, and he provided us with some information. He let us know there was a new committee, the Administrative Council. And this is the PC members, and it also includes division chairs, deans, Sarah Garcia and Peg Blake, who's the interim Dean of Enrollment. He gave us an update on the expansion of the athletics program. He also let staff assembly know that there were some changes in the food services. A new company, Sedexa, would be providing food services for us and for the students. He gave us an update on the ICE building. And he also invited everybody to come to a monthly meeting. So he has started a monthly President's Chat, and Shannon lets us know when and where that is, which is very nice. It's an open meeting for good communication.
Great.
And we also had nine new employees, so that was pretty great.
That's good. Very good. Glad. Anything further, Kathy?
No.
Board, any questions of Kathy?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Faculty Assembly, Joe Jacoby.
Well, thank you, Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, guests. Taking a shot across Grayden Stanley's bow with the tie-dye bowtie.
Very nice.
Although I think I'm making a great case for the clip-on, because my bowtie tying skills could use a lot of help. But, at our meeting, we, this month, we heard an update on the compensation policy. We had a presentation about the upcoming Northwest Undergraduate Conference and the humanities that's, where our faculty are involved in and our students are involved in. And it's a pretty great event, particularly focusing on recognizing student work. We got advising updates from Erin Cloyde, because we'll be getting new software, and so he solicited us to let him know what their needs might be, or what our needs are as we develop this new software and implement it. And then President McLennan visited us, he had a very busy day, discussing the evaluation of administrators and the plan for working with that this fall. And then that was pretty much that, because we just had discussion following and then ran out of time.
Okay. Board, any questions? Good report. Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, Senate, Lisa Kellerman.
All right, good evening. I'm here for a Senate report, standing in for Jessica Adams, who couldn't be with us tonight. So, at our September Senate meeting, we didn't have any new business in lieu of a lengthy first and second reading for minor changes to the compensation policy, because we did want a new version of that to be presented to you this evening. So in lieu of that, we did decide as a body to approve minor changes to the previous proposed policy, and we created a joint resolution to show our support for that. So I'll just read that to you now. The North Idaho College Senate supports Compensation Policy 30216 as written and presented to the NIC Board of Trustees on Wednesday, September 26, 2018. And that was our meeting.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
Board, any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Right, that takes us to our President's Report. President McLennan.
Thank you. Good evening. So a few weeks ago, we had the opportunity to attend the Boys and Girls Club Annual Black and White Auction, and we were recognized. NIC was recognized at that event as one of their key community partners. And really pleased with this, and it's a couple things that are driving that. One is, for the second year in a row, NIC, the NIC Foundation will be giving first-year full tuition and fees paid scholarship to the Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year. That started last year. And then this year, they announced that the NIC Foundation will be providing $21,000 scholarships to students coming out of the Boys and Girls Club program.
Oh, that's amazing.
And that's to be determined, you know, they have two sites, and actually a third program now down in Plummer, just however that mix works out. And I guess thirdly, I'll just mention that this is the second installment to what will become future installments of our work with the kids and the staff at Boys and Girls Club. We, a lot of interest with Ryan Davis and his staff to start looking at programming for students at all grade levels and having age-appropriate conversations about what their journey through school looks like and how it connects to post-secondary education. And we have a lot of interesting ideas out there. It's actually fun work and rewarding. But again, we were recognized for that and happy to do it. I just want to, I sent out a report of some of my activities just a couple days ago, so I won't go through too many of those things. What I didn't put on there, but it did occur to me as I was hearing the presentations tonight, is I was invited to attend the staff and faculty assembly meetings, as you heard. The staff assembly was a regular rotation where we go and provide cabinet updates. But I was also asked to address another concern, and by both the staff and the faculty assemblies, and that was the topic that Joe raised around 360-degree evaluations of administrators. And I appreciated the opportunity to do that, because it's been on my list of things to address since coming on board and actually made some progress on that last year. But there's pretty strong interest among the two constriction groups for us to do that and do it now. And so there was some conversation around that. What I've, what we will be doing is we will be administering a 360-degree evaluation for directors and above this fall semester. We're narrowing down the process for that to happen. But as I was, as I was listening to the concerns that were driving... But as I was, as I was listening to the concerns that were driving that interest, and I, you know, I don't know fully what they are, but I have some knowledge of some of the concerns. You know, it occurred to me that this is a good time for us to do a campus climate survey, so that I can get a valid survey results of, of how NIC's health as a campus community is going and what are the areas that, that we need to work on. So I've made that commitment also, that in the spring, we will administer a campus climate survey. And I think between the results of a 360-degree evaluation, as well as campus climate survey, we'll, we'll produce some goals of how we can be a better college and better fulfill our, our mission. So I, I thank both the faculty and the Staff Assemblies for inviting me to their assembly meetings to have that conversation. It's an important conversation I value, and I know we all value all of our employees at North Idaho College, and, but like any large organization, there's always room for improvement. So I just want to make sure the Board was aware of that conversation. That's all I have.
That's great. Well, as a public employee, former, retirement's good, and a supervisor, I certainly was subjected to the 360 evaluations. I think they're very helpful. Sometimes you don't always get, you know, sunshine and rainbows, but it's good information, and anyone should be open to that. I've also dealt with the climate studies in organizations, and I think that you can get a lot of really good information, and it does guide you on areas that you maybe want to, to shape and move. So I think those are great, great things to move forward with, and I'm, I'm glad that you're doing that.
Thank you.
Board, any comments on the President's Report? Okay. Old Business, Tab 1, our first reading, our action item on our compensation, excuse me, first reading, not action, compensation structure policy. Dr. McLennan.
Okay, so, I could actually ask Trustee Murray and Trustee Wood to present this with me, but I'll go ahead and-
Trustee Murray'd be happy to.
Go ahead and do this. So, you have the background on Tab 1. This, this policy in one iteration or another has come before you, has been the subject of workshop and, and quite a bit of discussion. The Board asked Trustee Murray and Wood to work with the policy. They have done so. It has gone back to the constituent leaders and Staff Senate, and you have that version of it tonight for action.
I thought it was first reading.
I'm sorry? Well, it is, it is, it is, you're right, it is first reading, and it's not for action.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Board, you have the draft policy in front of you. You've all had a chance to review it. I think if you have some questions, comments, statements, now is a good time. Trustee Howard.
I expect that was, excuse me, one of the ones that had a little more heartburn about the initial policy than some of the others. And as I read through this, I think a lot of those have been resolved. I still have some concern where part of the policy that says the administration may withhold step advancements only in the event of significant or unexpected financial needs that result in funding not being available. It's the only that troubles me, because I think there may be instances that we can't foresee now that have to do with programming or some other aspects, but I, as I read the language, I think that it's probably broad enough that even decisions driven by programming or some other need would fit within it. And I'm comfortable with the addition of the language dealing with the authority of the Board.
Trustee Banducci.
I'm going to agree with Mr. Howard's observation. I like where it says, "We'll invite the broad input from the campus community." I do like that the, specifically talks about the Board having the final approval. Because of the businesses that I'm in and what I have to do, especially with money and things, there are certain words, never, always, only, that always, that make me nervous, often, I should say, often make me nervous. And so, the word only would be my one thing. It can be, again, within the context of the broader language, that can be unduly restrictive depending on how it's interpreted, or could be a point of contention as we try to prove or disprove whether we have funding that's available. That would be my concern.
Okay. I think that as we've, this has taken a while. We've gone through this, a lot of reiterations of it. And I, I think, Ken, that what you set out to do, you wanted transparency. That was important to you. And I would have to commend the committee that's worked on this. I guess that'd be Brad and I as well. That, I think we've accomplished that. The transparency piece is there, and the final important piece was the Board having final authority, and that's there too. So I feel very good about this, or we wouldn't have brought it forward, but we'll certainly listen to input from the Board. And if, if all of you are comfortable with it, we will move forward and wait for second reading. Any comments?
I'm not going to make any motion to change the language. I think, again, as I indicated, the word only concerns me, but I think the rest of the, the sentence is, is a framework that will allow the interpretations that we might need in the future.
Okay, good. All right. Anything further, Board?
Is there need for a second reading? Move to next.
Just a matter of process, we like to do that.
I don't think we can do it under the new statute.
That's right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, this will be back before us again in October. Thank you to the committee that worked so hard on this, and I think we finally got there. Nice work. All right, that takes us to our New Business, Tab 2, our action item, Transfer Funds for Capital Improvement. And we spoke a little bit about this in the Board Workshop, and the Board has been tasked with looking, looking at what our priorities will be, coming off of all of the work that's been done on campus for facilities needs. And we had a really good workshop, but we realized that we need to move forward, and in order to do that, we need to have, give the President the ability to, to accomplish that. So I would listen to the Board if you had any conversation on this comment, or if you have a motion. Trustee Howard.
I have a motion, and then we can discuss it, I guess, that, that the Board authorized transfer of $2,800,000 to the Capital Reserve Fund from the General Fund. That's my motion.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Yeah.
Trustee Howard.
My understanding is that from prior audits and that sort of thing, is that there's a recommended 15% retention in the General Fund for accounting purposes that is looked at by people doing audits, and I think it's appropriate that we, we balance our, our funds as appropriate, not have too much in one fund and not enough in another fund. And clearly, we're going to need to have some of this money over into our building fund. So, my earlier discussion is, I thought maybe we could transfer more, but this sounds like we take 15% of the lowest level of resources that we have during the course of the year, and then we, we use that as a basis upon which then to move money out of the fund. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And Chris, just for the audience's sake, why don't you explain what the Capital Investment Fund is?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, in 2009, the Board established a, a fund, and it's been called numerous things over time, but it's essentially been a Capital Reserve Fund that's restricted by the Board for the use, for the direction of the Board. And that actually is allocated every year based off of annual tax receipts. And so when we receive our tax receipts, we take $2.5 million of that and, and change, and segregate that from the General Fund and put it in a designated fund that the Board controls.
And some of the things that we've used that fund for, do you want to talk about that?
Absolutely. The fund originally helped acquire the mill site, and most recently allowed the college to pay cash for the development and construction of the Career and Technical Education Center in Rathdrum.
Great. Thank you very much. Any further discussion, Board? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, takes us to Tab 3, our action item. We're going to authorize, consider authorizing preliminary study on gymnasium and parking garage. And this once again goes back to our workshop we held before the meeting, in which our administration provided us with the information on the possibility of a gymnasium in the future, possible needs on campus, that we have to decide what the priorities are. Board, I would entertain a motion and I'd also entertain discussion. Trustee Howard.
I'd like to make a motion that the Board authorize the administration to utilize $35,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund to retain architectural services to complete a preliminary study on the development and construction of a gymnasium and parking garage, and to determine the scope and preliminary programming and development costs.
35 or 34?
I said 35.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at Tab 3, and it said 34 there. Did you want to do, as per the tab, or?
Oh, I'm happy with 34 here.
Sorry, I didn't-
The motion is $34,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I will second that number.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion? Trustee Dunlap.
Just a question, is $34,000 adequate to conduct this study, or does there need to be some additional space in there?
Well, Chris, I'll let you answer that. I believe that's the price that we've negotiated for this process.
Okay, all right.
And then, President McLennan, if you could, just for the audience's sake, give a review of the workshop and what we're actually authorizing.
Trustee Wood, thank you. We, this money will be used to allow the college, in working with our architectural contractor, to scope out the, the design, the initial stages of design and design possibilities that would go into an athletic facility and adjoining, or parking solution, parking structure.
Thank you. And what we've learned through this past year of study on campus, that was initiated by you through looking at facilities and master planning, is that we do have program needs, and we're not meeting some of those program needs with our current facilities. Correct?
That's correct. Well, let me just add to that, that all of this work has been, is, is coming from a, over a year-long integrated planning process where we took a serious look and a very integrated look at all the planning needs of North Idaho College, and a big part of that was the physical plan, structure, to meet the programming needs of the college today and into the future. So, as, insofar as we have a program of athletics, and we have that as part of our, part of the work we do in fulfilling our mission, then yes, this, this, this work that we're doing right now is supporting the program needs of the college.
Great, thank you. Oh, Trustee Howard.
I guess I just want to make clear that by our authorizing this expenditure in this study, we are not setting any priorities. There are a number of different projects that are being proposed by the administration, including the Meyer Health Expansion, Headland and Lee Kildow, and the campus site plan, and we are not trying to attempt any priority setting with this. We're just trying to accumulate information so that at some point in the future, we're able to make a better informed judgment.
Good point, thank you. President McLennan.
Trustee Wood, Trustee Howard, yeah, I, I'm glad you brought that up, because at least they, one of the priorities that's on the list, Meyer Health and Sciences Building, we're fortunate in that the scoping for that activity was conducted in the actual original construction of the building. So, we're leapfrogging over that project to do the scoping for this project, only because that one has, that work is already at the level that we would need it to be, and the same kind of level for the athletic project has already been done.
Very good, all right. Any further questions, Board? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Takes us to our information items, our monthly financial report. Chris Martin.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit of the financial statements and an overview as we go into a new fiscal year. So, just for the sake of conversation, see if we can blow this up just a little bit Looking at the end of, of the prior fiscal year, just a little bit about a brief update as we kind of close out last fiscal year and we jump into this first quarter, I will make a note that we are finalizing our audit and waiting on adjusting journal entries. So these numbers are preliminary as of September the 18th. But some really good news to report, total revenues for this fiscal year have come in right there, year-to-date, $48.1 million on a budget, $47.6.
I'm sorry, can you zoom that out a little bit?
I will do my best here. So this, again, this is the, the prior fiscal year, and again, total revenues, I want to point that out there, 48.1 was our actuals, on a budget of 47.6 for total revenues, came in a little better than expected there. And then on the expense line at the bottom there, total expenses for last fiscal year, $46.1 million on a, on a budgeted plan of 47.6. And so the net income prior to the adjusting journal entry for, for last fiscal year, currently showing right at $1.9 million. And the Board has a more detailed study that, that was provided that shows all the line items. For the sake of display, we removed some of the, the detail. Any, any questions as we kind of close out last fiscal year?
Board, questions on this? I do appreciate that you provide these reports to us.
So, we will be bringing forward the audit for last fiscal year. These numbers will change slightly as the audit is finalized, and we'll be doing that in October, November, depending on the availability of the Board and the audit firm. So we're closing out last fiscal year. I just wanted to show you a quick look into this current fiscal year.
Okay.
One quick question, if I may.
Oh.
Absolutely.
Trustee Banducci.
I'm sorry. You know, Chris, those numbers are pretty impressive. You're at about 40, 47.7 million on the budget, but you come in at almost 48.2 million in revenue, and you're down at 46.2 million in expenditures, so you're about 1.5 million under budget, in excess of about another 5 million or so in revenue. So we're, we're 2 million to the good, $2 million surplus.
Almost.
Yeah.
In total net income for last fiscal year.
That's, that's pretty impressive. As a percentage, that's about 4%.
As a percentage, it's, we would actually like to be a little closer to our, our forecasted budget, from a forecasting and percentage piece, but we're moving in the right direction. If we're going to have a variance, you're right.
Yeah, okay. Is there any particular thing you attribute that to, or is it all just little teeny pieces, or were there any big bites there?
I think I would, I would share, Members of the Board, the big bite there is, is what we, we don't budget in, when we develop the budget, is we don't plan for open positions. And so a big driver of our cost savings throughout the year is as we have open positions and the time to fill, generally, that cost savings falls to the bottom line. And so as we have attrition or changes throughout the year, that, that's a portion of what you're seeing there.
I guess that makes sense, since personnel, payroll, that's about half our budget.
Closer to 70% of our budget.
Oh, with benefits, you're right. I was thinking just on the payroll side, but with benefits, yeah, you're right. So, significant portions, that would make a big difference.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, if I could just share briefly where we're looking at FY 2019.
Absolutely.
The last month that we've closed here is August, we're still working on September, obviously. But just to kind of give you insight of where we're at right now, the revenue that we brought in year-to-date is $7.5 million year-to-date. That's about 15% of our, our budgeted revenue for the year. It's, it's right on track with what we would be expecting at this time. You'll be aware, basically, the college gets paid twice a year. We get tuition and fees for the fall and the spring semester, and we receive tax receipts in a similar fashion.
Okay.
And then if we go down and just briefly look at our expense line here.
Chris, may I ask one quick question?
Absolutely.
As you mentioned, for the fall and the spring semesters, what sort of percentage do we see for the summer term?
The summer is negligible for the overall budget. It's literally single-digit percentages.
That's what I was wondering. Okay, thank you.
And just to draw your attention to the, to the expense line, on a budget of $49.6 million, the college has currently expensed 5.7, which is roughly 12% of our budget expenses. So, we're right where we would expect to be. Just want to provide this update on a regular basis as we kind of had some enrollment come in and some tuition and give you a snapshot of where we're headed.
Great, that's wonderful. Trustees, any questions?
Your comment that the summer tuition is negligible and number-wise, that's true, but looks like we only saw 42% of what we had budgeted for.
In summer?
Yeah, for the summer.
I believe we saw more than that from what we budgeted for in the summer. Summer is budgeted as a total, if I can explain summer briefly.
Please.
We budget summer to be self-sufficient. It stands on its own. And so, the, the expense line is tied directly to the number of classes that we're operating. And there's not a large revenue tied to how we offer summer courses. It's a really one-to-one relationship for summer.
I mean, I was just looking at the numbers and you had a budget of $750,000 and you've got an actual through August of $304,000 and the summer session's over.
Correct.
So, we didn't meet our, at least our budgeted projection.
Two, two pieces, if I may. Summer crosses the fiscal year. And so, the June revenue that we received for summer fell in the prior fiscal year and the June revenue we'll receive in, in this upcoming year will be applied back to this. So, that number isn't a full look at summer, summer crosses the fiscal year. So, as we get closer to June, I would anticipate we'd be closer to that 750 amount.
Good, thank you.
Great. All right. Board, any questions or?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. That takes us to our Fall 2018 Enrollment Update. Grayden Stanley.
Thank you very much, Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan and other colleagues and guests here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update. I have my colleague with me again. You recall Diane Rins helped support all of this information last time and appreciate her work on this as well. Little information I want to give you, you might know that this is the sixth week of school already. It's hard to believe that we're that far into the semester. And so, some of the numbers that you'll see tonight are reported as of sixth, sixth week. We're using some of the figures that you'll also see at PC Weekly. We review these too so that our attention is always on enrollment and on retention. We're paying closer attention to that all the time. We've certainly switched from an emphasis right now on recruitment to retention. We have these folks inside the door and we want to make sure we keep them here and help support them through this semester and continuing on into the spring. I'd remind you too, the official reporting of numbers occurs on October 15th. So, by the time we get to next month's Board meeting, we'll have those numbers that we've reported in to the state then as well. These are not final, there are still numbers coming in. Once again, we have late start classes, some which will occur over the next two weeks. And we still have some of our dual credit classes that all those registrations aren't in. So, since the last time we reported, numbers have improved a bit and should continue to improve just a bit more. There are a number of reports that we have an opportunity to look at. I mentioned last time, the work that Diane and her staff does with CROWA. Much of that is about those statistics of our students who we recruit, who we retain. And so, we have access to that information more often and are paying close attention to that. You also asked for more detail at the last Board meeting, so we've tried to provide you with more information than you saw last time. At the end of our presentation, if there's other information that you would like next time around, please let us know and we'd be glad to bring you more as there's a lot more available to us now. So, I'd like to turn it over to Diane and have her share with you some of these figures.
Thank you, Grayden. Really appreciate your reminders that these are unofficial numbers. I did take the word unofficial off the title slide, but that is a good reminder always. So, I wanted to show you this longitudinal enrollment trend. This is dating back to Fall 2005. This is a comparison of fall-to-fall enrollment numbers. And this is a 13-year spread. This, this is a chart that I have found fascinating and it clearly shows an increase in enrollment during the time that we all would recognize as an economic downturn in the 2008, 2009, 10, 11 years. So, as we look at the 2018 fall enrollment, which is not yet final, may still increase some, a bit, but it appears over the past 13 years as though perhaps we are returning to a normal baseline. So, I thought this was an interesting chart to share with you. That dotted green line represents headcount, that's individual actual human beings who are enrolled in the college for credit classes. And the blue line represents FTE or a calculation of credits per headcount. This is a five-year comparison and one-year comparison chart. This is, you can see the five-year average in the top row, 17 fall total, 18 fall total, and then the percent change over five years average and over the last one year. In those column levels, you will see our section count, that's the individual number, number of course sections that are offered. Headcount represents, again, those individual unique students who are enrolled. Seat count is a little different number, which represents the number of people in actual seats in classrooms. So, oftentimes, you might have a single student, single headcount, taking multiple courses, which we would call seat count. Some people refer to that as a duplicated headcount. You might hear that language as well. Total credits enrolled and then again, that FTE or full-time enrollment or full-time equivalency that is that calculation of headcount and credits. Current headcount as compared to prior years, we showed you last two years, current year and last year of this chart at our last meeting. Again, those 2018 numbers are unofficial, but as you look at the ratio of academic transfer, dual enrollment and CTE enrollment, you can kind of see some trends there. This is a five-year trend of headcount and then a five-year trend of credit count of those same academic students, dual enrollment and CTE.
Diana, could you please clarify or confirm for me, the 2017 headcount numbers, 48, 7, 80, that represents a final enrollment count?
So, once again, yes.
And that, so we're, we're, you're showing the trend, but you're not really showing the apples-to-apples comparison with this one because we can't, because we don't have the final numbers yet.
All numbers that I'm sharing with you that are labeled 2018 fall are not official yet. It is my understanding from you that you would like to see some trend data.
Sure. The only reason, the only reason I bring it up is we have also from time to time done week-to-week or same-date comparison numbers. I just want to be clear to the Board that these are not same-date comparison numbers.
These are not same-day comparison numbers. This is census data, official numbers as compared to where we're at today. This is enrollment by division. These are divisions across the institution, divisions of study. Again, some data regarding number of sections, number of headcount, seat count, total credits enrolled and FTE. And again, these numbers are Fall '18 unofficial. Yes, sir?
Question, please. All right, let's just take aerospace. I just want to make sure I'm clear on something here. When I look at that, it says section count, 17. Does that mean if there's a class that it can accommodate 17 students?
No. That means that within the aerospace program, there are 17 different course sections, course sections offered. One of those courses may be offered once or one may be offered multiple times and we call those sections. So, that's the difference between a course and a section. We have not included on here how many courses they offer.
So, it could be six courses and 17 sections if each of them was offered three and one was offered two.
Correct.
For example, five of them at three and, and one of them at two. That'd give you 17. So, then if I'm looking at headcount, how do I correlate headcount to the section count?
We have not provided here an average number of enrollees per course section. That certainly is something that we could do. But right now, this is summary-level data and so, we're just looking at the number of sections and the total number of students who are currently enrolled in courses within that program.
Okay. And the numbers have varied slightly since I printed this off when it came out with, with the Administrative Council.
It's a weekly update, yes.
No, I understand. Okay, so, I'm sorry, I'm not, not trying to be obtuse here or anything, but when I look at that number and it says 40 and I've got 17 sections and I don't, and there may be 10 to 15 to 20 people per section, right?
Mm-hmm.
Theoretically, what does that number, 40, signify? What is, what does that number mean?
So...
How do I, how do I, what do I do with that number? What does it mean to me?
That's great. So, I would not try to correlate any meaning between the first column and the second column. Those are two distinctly separate things. The first column, we're looking at the number of course sections that are offered to students. In the second column, we're looking at the number of students who are taking courses within that program.
So, I have 17 sections, but I only have 40 students?
In the third column.
Now, that should be section times seats, right? Third column?
In the third column is the number of sections times the number of students enrolled in each section. Yes. So, that's your total, what, what you might consider a total enrollment for that program.
So, I'm looking at about eight kids per section?
I'm not quick on the math at the Board meeting, but I would probably say that's a safe guess.
Well, eight times 17 is, let's see, 80, 50, 636, so about seven and a half maybe.
Okay.
Just for quick math. So, I'm looking at about seven and a half kids per section and I still got to think about what that headcount means to me. And, and Grayden, I, yeah. I guess my, where I'm looking at is how many seats do I have? How many butts do I have in the seats?
Okay.
Excess capacity do I have?
Thank you for your, your language choice, Mr. Banducci. I will repeat it back to you because you have said it to me. I didn't want to be disrespectful, but that is a language choice that we use in the office in institutional research.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the seat count is also called butts in seats. Yes.
Okay.
The headcount are the number of individual students. So, remember, those 40 students may be taking more than one course section. Those 40 students may be taking more than one...
About three and a third based on your numbers.
Yes, and so, the instructors in our aerospace program, for example, and I just do want to clarify, that's a very high-tech program that is very deserving of, or is to be expected to have lower enrollments because of that. It's a very high-tech program.
It took aerospace engineering, I understand.
Yes. But those aerospace instructors will see those same 40 students in several different classes or course sections throughout the day and throughout the week. So, those 40 students are number of students who are enrolled within courses in the program.
Is there a way for me to tell then, and maybe you have this data, it's just hard to reflect all on one table? What's a, you know, one of the things we looked at really hard when we looked at the CTE facility was getting from the Headland building to the new facility was increasing the capability, reducing the wait lists, how many people we, could we put into a, a section, if you will. And then we've created some new classes, collision repair, whatever. How would I know what my capacity is per section? And it may vary by section. Some particular classes may be eight, some may be 12. Again, that's a very, you know, aerospace, and I have full comprehension, understanding what my bachelors and masters are and what I did in the world with, with the military. And I worked with NASA for years, so I get this one. Oh, my master's is electrical engineering, so, space ops. So, having said that, how do we know how full we are? That would be my curiosity.
Sure. And we do have, we have many, many different ways that we can slice and dice our data. This is just a high-level picture for you. You can tell me if it's too detailed or not detailed enough. We certainly do have capacity reports or what we might call fill rate. That would be looking at each one of our sections, which as you can see is our grand total for this fall. We have almost 1,400 different course sections. And each one of those has an identified capacity. And as a calculation then of the number of students who are enrolled within that course section, we have a, what we might call fill rate. But each, I'm not sure that that level of detail is what you're looking for.
Probably not, but, but probably trends. If you're aware of trends, if we have programs where you're seeing low enrollment, you've been pretty good, but lead us certainly go about that in the past. If we have low enrollment and maybe it's a program that we need to transition out of, which I don't think that Todd's suggesting that or any of us are suggesting that, but it, it does pique our interest when we see low numbers and we try to understand them. But 1,400, I don't think, Board, do you want 1,400 different reports on? Okay. Then we will just rely on you to give us the trends.
Well, I wasn't quite looking for that fidelity, but I'm trying to get just an understanding of what I'm seeing so I can understand the numbers.
That kind of information does exist, but in the interest of, of your time, wanted to just provide you an overview. And I, I am certain, Mr. Banducci, that you do understand an aerospace program, but I do want to speak to the audience and the public that just because our aerospace program may have an average of seven students in a course, that doesn't necessarily reflect on the rest of the programs in our, in our institution.
No, no, the contrast, a humanities class might have 30 or something.
That's correct, yes.
Dr. Burns wanted to make a statement.
Chair Wood, Trustee Banducci, if I could maybe just offer a very simplified explanation of, of what we would be seeing, there's probably a total of 40 students enrolled in our, currently enrolled in our aerospace program. And that's what I would refer to as the headcount. Typically, in our Career and Technical Education courses, because they have lab components to them, the typical cap of those programs for lab is about 16. Also, what is typical of our Career and Technical Education programs is that in the first year of the program, we see higher enrollments than in the second year. We know that students job out, they do all sorts of things. And so, if we were going to divide those numbers out, I would say that in our first year of aerospace programs, our fill is probably somewhere between 12 and 16. In our second year of a program, it's probably more like between 7 and 12. And so, it really is a, a variable there. Just in general, I would have to tell you, and this is something we've been struggling with since the economy has improved, our programs are not full. We want them full. We, we are doing everything we can to attract students to get us to the top number in every single program that we have. We are not currently there, but we are continuing to work on it.
If I may. None of this was to be critical. It's more for my edification to understand what I'm looking at and so that I can make sense of it. I get statistics and all that and I want to see the numbers. I just want to, you're trying to relay information to us.
Yes.
And I want to understand what you're giving us.
Yes, thank you. I very much desire that you do understand it. I have a vested interest in, in presenting you this information. I would like to share a few more slides with you.
Trustee Howard had a comment.
Yes, I'm so sorry.
Hopefully, more of an observation than a question. This, this is a very helpful slide that you've got up there. I got to tell you, it impresses me that the math, computer science, engineering and natural sciences courses are so robust. I did not expect that. And that, that speaks well of the students that are coming here and the kinds of courses that they're taking and their preparation to go on. I was, I'm quite frankly pleasantly surprised with those numbers.
Okay, thank you. Continue.
Okay. And this, in this slide, you'll see, again, the, the grand total is exactly the same as you saw in the previous slide, just a different perspective of the data. This is enrollment by location and I ask that you give me just a few moments to explain this slide as there, there may be some questions that can be cleared up. You can clearly see that there is a layout by county, by our service counties especially. At the very bottom of this table, you will see two rows, one that looks at online enrollments and one that looks at dual enrollments in the high schools in our service area. And so, those two rows were taken out of the county calculations because we wanted to take a look at them separately. So, those two rows are not included in those county calculations. So, if a student was enrolled in an online course, then that section count, well, that section count is those courses that are offered online. Headcount are those students who are, number of students who are taking those online courses. Seat counts, as Mr. Banducci so eloquently said, butts in seats.
That's your guys' term.
If it gives a clearer explanation, I'm happy to use it. Total credits enrolled, FTE. And then, I just want to... And then, I just want to make note that that final row there, that dual enrollment in the local high schools, I need to be very clear with you that that is not the full picture of our dual enrollment, which I will show you momentarily in the next slide. That represents only those students who are enrolled in dual classes at their local high schools. If a student in the dual enrollment program came to our campus here at North Idaho College, where we're standing today, and took some courses, that student would be wrapped into the Kootenay County row. And that is because this is section-based data rather than student-based data. So, those sections are offered here on campus. Dual enrollment, students may enroll in them, whereas those sections in the high schools are offered at their local high schools. So, we pulled them out.
Trustee Banducci.
And maybe this is more for the audience, but just for the edification. We have our facility in Bonner-Sfarry. We have our facility in Sandpoint. We have our facility in Kellogg. Obviously, we have the Workforce Training Center in Post Falls. We have our main campus here in Kootenay County. Can you elaborate a little bit on a couple of the other counties that you have reflected there as to what that's representing?
I will defer to Dr. Burns on that question.
Chair Wood, Trustee Banducci. Benawan County, that would be our location at the tribal center in...
Okay.
Pullman. I almost said Pullman. And to be honest with you...
Is that in Worley?
Yes.
Or Plummer?
Plummer. I'm sorry, Plummer.
Plummer.
That's, well, I got my P's mixed up there. Plummer, yes.
All right. I misled you there. My bad.
No, that's okay. But, to be quite honest with you, I am not clear about Ness Pierce County. Oh, sorry, LC.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, our class is at LC, because we do have our health professions courses that are down there.
And a follow-up, Lina. Dr. Burns, sorry. What, looking at our outreach centers, do you see any, anything coming forward from the president or from administration on how healthy they are, some that we maybe need to take a look at? Are they still viable? What do you see in the future?
Chair Wood, we talk about this often, and we understand that our numbers in the course sections that we offer in those centers is low, and the enrollment is low, particularly in Bonner and in Kellogg, at our Kellogg Center, the Silver Valley Center. We also understand, though, the importance of our presence in those communities, because it is our presence that is the avenue for people to come to North Idaho College, the fact that we have the ability for them to be advised up there, for them to explore community college, for them to take their dual credit classes in those centers, for them to just utilize the computers for whatever their needs are. So, we offer all of those services, which we really think is that access point to higher education and to those communities. So, it continues to be important to us. Despite the enrollment numbers, those centers continue to be important to us.
Dr. McClain.
Trustee Wood, I, thank you, Dr. Burns. I would also add that we have a lot of enrollment that drives from those communities to the Coeur d'Alene campus, or to the Rathrum campus, as a result of their entry into our courses and programs at these outreach centers. So, it's valued, it's incredibly valuable. And if you go to these communities and talk to the folks who are participating in our programs there, very passionate. We just hired a new coordinator who just began out in the Silver Valley, and there was a nice article in the local paper. They are passionate about building those programs and building the services out there, and it does afford an entry point to, again, first-generation students who would not otherwise be in college. They may have no awareness till they hit those outreach centers that they're college material, or that college is even an answer for them. So, there's another value proposition there that we, in those many conversations that we consider as well.
Well, I would have to tell you, I've spent some time up in Sandpoint quite a bit lately, and the people that I've met up there for various meetings, and I sees a big deal in that community. And I would have to imagine that the other communities feel the same way. And it is, it is a necessary thing, but we always want to analyze it to make sure it's affordable. So, carry on.
One final slide for you, and this is representative of the full picture of dual enrollment. You can see that there, and this is just headcount, because we're not focusing on sections here. There are 403 students enrolled in our, in courses in our Coeur d'Alene campus, 348 online. And then, you can see the further breakdown of different high school locations throughout our service area below. And those are in a ranked order by headcount. We have a total right now of 1,223 students enrolled in dual courses.
And again, those are enrollments that are still building.
Thank you. Yes, again, for that reminder. We, our dual enrollment office tells me that we are expecting quite a few additional enrollments to add to that.
Great. Questions, Board? Trustee Murray.
Grayden, you had mentioned late start programs. Do we use adjunct for that, or how's that staffed?
Thank you, Trustee Murray. I'm going to defer that to my good friend. I'm just directing traffic up here, so I'd like to...
You do. Nice job.
...my good friend, Dr. Burns.
Chair Wood, Trustee Murray, we actually use both adjunct and full-time faculty for our late start classes. It just depends on the location of the late start classes. So, in the high schools, often when we're delivering to the high schools, it will be the high school teachers that start those late start classes. On our campus, though, they're primarily, primarily full-time, but also adjunct faculty on campus. So, it really is course-dependent.
Okay. Thank you. The other comment more is, we've asked for this information. That one further request would be, since some of us are going digital, and that last slide was really hard to see, is there a chance of getting, even if they're preliminary numbers, a copy previous, prior to our board meeting, so we can actually look it up and frame our questions?
Trustee Murray, we'd be glad to provide that to you. We'll do that in the future, so you have that opportunity.
Thank you so much.
And we'll change the font size on the screen.
No, I don't need it. I got it here.
Thank you.
I have just an observation.
Trustee Banducci.
You know, one of the things, we're looking at this, and I think one of the successes that we're having, as I'm looking at, and again, I'm referring back to the Administrative Council minutes, which kind of got me going in some of this, precipitated my call to Grayden, and to let him know I was going to ask some questions tonight, because I had some curiosity, is that we're, I think we're doing a good job of serving a very diverse group of students. I mean, I'm looking at this, and we've got 20 students in the Milrite Program. We've got about 18 students in Culinary Arts. We're full in the cybersecurity. I don't know what that number is, but we're full. So, I'm thinking it's a comparable number. Medical Assistant Program is full, you know. We've got the Farm Techs. You've got Collision Repair they're talking about here, which, by the way, we always try to figure out how many are coming from K-Tech. Three of the four are articulating, it says, from K-Tech to our program. I'll still try to get better numbers at the next meeting of more of who's coming over. But, well, what a diverse series of courses and areas of study. My goodness, we've got the whole, we've just got a lot covered there. A lot of offerings. If a person's interested in trying to get a job, we should have given them all different opportunities and paths to choose from.
I would say, Mr. Banducci, that that speaks to how well North Idaho College is fulfilling its mission as a community college.
I would agree. I would wholeheartedly agree.
Thank you very much. Good presentation. Board, that takes us to Board Chair Report. It's very short. I was unable to travel to Boise for the meeting with the Community College Consortium, but the president, of course, attended. And I did get an email from Jerry G. of the meeting minutes, and I will forward those all on to you, so you can see what discussion was had. And then, follow-up questions, you can direct to the president. I have been in contact with one trustee from Eastern Technical. Is that correct? What is it called?
Community College of Eastern Idaho.
Thank you. It used to be Tech, okay. College of Eastern Idaho. And what she relayed to me is that all five of them were up for election, and only one of them has an opponent, so the majority of the board will be returning. I haven't heard anything yet from CWI or CSI as far as the elections. Maybe somebody else has. This board looks like you're looking at us. We're staying. And so, for continuity's sake, the people that we've been working with in the consortium, it looks like the majority will be staying. And that is the, all of my reports. Do I have some remarks for the good of the order? Trustee Banducci.
Two things. Chris, when we might get our next update on the new building?
Madam Chair, members of the board are happy to provide a report at any time, and we can definitely put that into the next month's...
Maybe next month.
Agenda, if that's the will of the board.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe every other month or something, just a little bit of an update. Second thing, and maybe this is to Grayden, because I know he does work out in Post Falls as part of their chamber and everything. Have we talked to anybody out in Post Falls about their agreement with the cable to get us back on TV out there? I asked, I touched on that last month, but I'm not going to let that one go. Who has contacts? Who knows people?
I think Laura addressed that last month.
And I didn't see Laura. Is everything okay?
Well, I'm sure.
I just didn't see her tonight. Is she traveling or something?
Okay.
I was hoping it wasn't health or anything.
Board, any comments, questions? All right. Meeting's adjourned.